I'm calling to the meeting to order and I don't see any public so we'll move right to the consent agenda. Is there anything you want to pull from the consent agenda? If not, entertain motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the June 25th meeting, the approval of Lawrence, and the approval of the Westford Transportation Contract. So moved. Thank you Liz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing say nay. Okay, I thought we were going to be introducing our new student member but I think we'll be doing that next time. But I do want to introduce our new recording secretary. Hopefully many of you have met Natasha already. She works as the executive assistant in operations. She's recently decided to move close to, well actually to us exemption, right? And so she decided in light of that that she could take on the responsibility as our recording secretary and we are thrilled.
Thank you.
So welcome Natasha. And we'll go around and introduce ourselves quickly just so you have a face that goes with the name sort of vice versa. So Liz.
Hi. I'm Liz.
I'm Keely, the phone.
Hi Natasha, nice to put name and a face together. I'm Diane Clements.
Natasha Kim Gleason.
Andre Roy.
Martha Hughes.
Beth Cobb.
Ryan Donigan.
Pat Murray.
Brendan Kinney.
Todd Oder, nice to meet you.
Okay. Beth reminds me that maybe not all of you have met Lorna either. Lorna is.
Hi Lorna.
You get lots of email from Lorna. So she's Beth's executive assistant and if you walk into the e-staff as she's the face right in front of you as you go down the hall. So nice to have both of you here. Alright, so we're going to have some instruction on board intranet. Which I'm still struggling middle of the head. Typical.
We always walk before we run.
We don't crawl.
And we'll be sprinting soon enough. So there has been a variety of different ways that people have been getting their materials over time. They're near the, near the conclusion of last school year, they had been more gravitation to a board website that had been set up than the old Google kind of side and actually Google has come out with a new Google sites that is a little bit more robust, can provide a little bit more data security for us and some different ways of leveling that information. And really what it, what it wants to be is your central digital depository for all things school board. So that this would be the way that we can communicate materials to you, but also it can be a resource for you. So if we're going through something and you say, you know, that would be handy to have at my fingertips all the time, be it enrollment data, be it staff ratios, be it performance data, we can start to collect that as a library for it to be a resource for you. And then over time it can become more and more valuable. It could also be a place that we do some of our budget work so that some things are there. Since it's a Google product, it leverages all the technology that's available to you with your Gmail account or in this case with your EWSD account which is leveraged off of Google app suites. So where, what the basic structure of the document or the creation is, is the board internet would be a landing page and each time the meeting materials on the homepage would be updated to point you to that page. You can also navigate by clicking on meeting materials. You'll get to this page and then as we work through our technical difficulties of our walking before running, then what this will be is really just a landing page that's going to navigate you to Google Drive. And you have a drive in which everyone on the school board, we also have a mechanism now that as people change, we have a more dynamic way of updating by using a list rather than individuals and so forth. But basically navigating two meeting materials, you'll see the listing of the dates, the 20th and so forth will be added later. By clicking on that, you'll be navigated to the drive and you'll see the meeting materials for that drive. Now there are three areas that we'll be working with, our sandboxes. There'll be an EWSD School Board Working which is primarily a place for agenda creation and that kind of work. There'll be EWSD School Board All and that will include the student members. And there's also, you'll navigate at times to EWSD School Board Elected. And primarily what elected would be is for personnel information or other information with regards to executive session or other things like that. So that there's even within the site itself, there's some data security for that purpose.
Brian, I'm sorry, can you go back and tell me how you got to intranet in the first place? I know how to get to some of these materials through shared drive, but I don't know how you got there, how you got to intranet.
Sure. So for the board notes link that Beth sent out on last Thursday, on the board notes in the top third of the section, there's a link to the board website.
It's important, not right in the board notes.
And then what you would, however people do it, the key would be to bookmark that link so that you can go back to it.
Okay, I'll deal with that later.
Okay.
Yeah, before you leave tonight, bookmark it.
Yeah.
Are you on the internet?
I'm on the internet. I've, I've been having mixed results getting on this. And I finally got on here because unfortunately I have too many Gmail accounts.
Oh, you got them there?
And I have logged out all of them.
Yep.
And logged on specifically to this one. And now I actually have it.
Yeah. Google is trying to help you.
Yeah, I noticed that. Yes. I, I, yeah, just like my two, you know, my two-year-old grandchild.
We have the same issue. Many of us have multiple profiles within it which is convenient for a host of reasons, but the difficulty is, is that that has a lot of legs, that permission, so you may be signed out of Chrome but still signed in on your personal to drive. So you did the best thing is to do that or actually take the bookmark and go in through incognito and then sign in that way and then you know that you're in an instance that's just school board?
So my question is, is that if I actually bookmarked this to my desktop, so I have easy access to grab it, am I going to have to constantly, what?
Will it work at home? Is that your question?
Well, it, well, it wouldn't really matter. This is my private machine. So I mean, it's, you know, am I going to be able to, is it going to confuse my other profiles again?
Yeah, so we're, we're working through that process right now, just in the same thing. We're experiencing it. And it's, it's partly because Google's trying to help us in being super responsive to us kind of changing profiles. And so we're trying to set up a set of basic bookmarks that will stick your identification of ewsd.org so that as you navigate through the site, it will continue to remember you. But it's, it's not a problem that's unique to us. It's something that's in the Google supports and areas like that as well.
Okay, so you had a list versus tiles. When I initially got into it, it was all tiles.
Yep. And so just like anything in the drive, people can begin to navigate the drive to how they best work and how they, how they work. We're going to be, our first attempt is to organize it by name and in a list, but I can click on this over on the right-hand side and these turn into tiles so that you have a preview of what those documents are. I can also go in and change the sort order, that if I didn't want to sort it by name but I wanted to sort it by last modified, so that I could see the latest thing that had been posted, I could do that. And so that you get to control that interface of that Google Drive for yourself personally and somebody else can control it for how they best work. So those, those are some of the features. This is, a lot of this is that the sites are now built as an aggregator of Google products. So in the past, you could drop a lot of different things into a Google site. Now it's nearly exclusive Google products. So what Natasha and Lorna have done on this page is basically create a widget to a Google Drive. So, you know, you could bypass this completely and bookmark the Google Drive which is shared with you.
Which is what I did when I couldn't get on. And then all the material is there.
It's pretty easy to find.
You bookmark that Google Drive, you'll get in there without, with no problem.
In Drive, I gotta share Drives. And that's like all that's shared with me. So then nobody else is sharing Drive with my school board.
In addition to the current materials, we're also going to keep track of the board goals. This was some good work that the board did as well as some annotated and evidence points they did with the board, with the board goals last year. We'll also be keeping the work plan. And the work plan is, it's central to the agenda kind of creation. And you can see that the work plan sort of takes every meeting and begins to go across. But the work plan also proceeds and allows you to see where the budget work sessions are and where their plan to occur. And it also starts to highlight in purple, you'll notice in March, we're suggesting two changes of March dates. One conflicts with town meeting date, that we know that we've done before we've changed that. The other one conflicts with fine arts night, which seems a priority for us to try to attend as stakeholders in the district. And then finally, there's a conflict in April with school vacation and that, but these are all to be determined finally by the board.
Are we supposed to be able to access this yet? Because when I go to it, it says it's not published.
Okay.
I have been able to access other materials, but not that.
Yep. We can certainly get.
Drop files here.
We've been sort of workflowing this, so there's also our clumsiness of, of being publishers that may be the issue. But this will be a central source for us. One, two, you can also go back on this work plan and you can look at last year. So that you can start to see like here are the meetings that occurred and here were the agenda topics that actually happened. So that we'll start to do almost a budget to actual. We'll have a work plan for the year, but we'll actually be able to record it so that when someone wants to say, when did we do that topic?
Yeah.
You'll be able to go back, go into the meeting. If we haven't set it aside as a resource, you'll be able to go into that exact meeting as well as the minutes.
Yep.
All of these things we've heard from board members of like, I, it took me two and a half hours to find that.
Thanks.
Or I couldn't find it.
Yeah, no, this is helpful. I'm getting that same message about the work plan not being published.
Okay.
So just heads up.
And I was able to open it.
Yeah.
Able to open.
I was able to open that and nothing else earlier. So, but this is happening at my work too. Like this is, we're switching over to Google Sites too and we're having constant communication with them at our, through our nonprofit switching to this. So I think it's partially that.
The, the key part of this is that you won't be able to avoid this site. So if it's not working for you, please reach out and individually get help. Because this site will be the presumed way we're communicating. And if you don't have access to it, we're going to have a big disconnect of people kind of knowing different parts and pieces.
Yeah, some of it.
And one trick is to close out all your other accounts while you're trying to do this and then you can maybe get access.
At least initially until you have some help from Google.
Or while you're needing this, then you can re-sign in. And it's, it's wonky right now, but it's going to get better. It's going to get better.
So then what we'll also do is even though things will be part of board meetings and they'll be found in the board meeting area, we'll also take them out and have them reside separately like superintendent reports. So that you'd have one page to go to all those. Monitoring reports. To try to find all the monitoring reports right now is a matter of looking at which agendas did they happen in, when did they happen, and how did they get filed? So, and part of this promise to you is that we want to be more timely with delivering you information. So part of this will be, there'll be some rolling information and we'll be better in saying, please check the website, we've just updated X. But that will be more of our traditional message now to, to ask you to visit the website because the documents changed or been posted. As a final element, just as you think of resources, if there's something that you have as appendix or you always go to or every year you start to keep a copy of, let us know because if it's useful to you, it's a good chance it will be useful to your fellow board members. And we can start to put in some elements like all the financial reports that have been presented to the board. It might be helpful to do it this way or it might be helpful to just have some top-line data. What's our revenue? What's our expenses? What's our tax rate? You know, it's the Hannaford's question. What are you being asked as a data need from your community members that we can just put right at your fingertips? This is all mobile-enabled as well, so you could get it right on your phone.
Okay, other questions? So I think it's going to be important that if we're struggling, we make an appointment to go see, ooh, Natasha.
Yeah, Lorna. Either office. If you go to east, it'll be Lorna. If you go to west, it'll be Natasha.
Okay.
Well, they troubleshooted for me together from both separate offices.
You were a very special case.
Is there a timeless?
You could reach out to them.
Wanting to email them and make an appointment, I think is probably the best one to do.
They could probably walk you through on the phone too.
Okay. Okay, are we all set with that agenda item for now? Let's move on to student transportation status update.
So you received in, on the board internet, your.
So, wait, so I think Jamie was going to come.
Yeah.
And this says 7:25, so maybe we should skip. Sorry, we'll go back to this when Jamie comes.
Okay.
Okay? All right. So let's move to the 2019, 2020 tax rates.
So everyone received this information a few weeks ago at this point, but we wanted to just bring it up so that, one, we could put it into our meeting and we could talk about it and also that we could then correspond more to our community about it. But as you know, during the budget work and the budget vote preceded the finalization of all the legislation and numbers that impact the ultimate tax rate. So we needed to do a reconciliation so that you and the public could say, okay, this is what the school board was projecting, this is what's actual, what's that difference? And then also, as we've done in the past, put that into some kind of longitude of what's it been over time. So it's the same information. You can see the big parts that we had for changes was that all the way through the process, we had a continued change in our equalized pupils. So those ended up going up 0.26 percent opposed to slightly down. And that was, that was driven with a good amount of corrections, but also the legislation that went in to hold harmless the preschool and the pre-certification process that impacted our, our district to a good degree. And then the other thing that happened was there was a change in yield and, and then ultimately that works its way down to tax rates and then the equalized, the CLA, the Common Level of Appraisal were made the same. That was no change. So were there any questions with this? As we, this is probably something we'll have Ben write some information about and get out through social media.
Seems like it's very good news and especially if you look at that history, it's pretty clear that so far merger has been very helpful to our taxpayers. Okay. Thank you very much for putting that together, Brian. And I think it was pretty helpful. All right, so let's move on to the government's task team presentation and update. Brendan, do you want to kick this off?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to thank the members of the task team for their work that we've put in. So Keely, Diane, Kim, Martha, and Beth.
That's a substitute.
Martha was the substitute. We've, we've had two meetings since our last get-together and one of the biggest pieces of homework for the group was to really try to understand of all of the ways that we might choose to govern ourselves, what are the options? What are the models that we might consider? Keely graciously took on the research process of figuring that out for us and will present tonight on sort of what we have initially discovered in terms of the various models we can consider. The other piece that you've probably seen via email is we've had to reschedule our retreat so that we can fulfill one of our other charges, which is to bring to, to the board a group of people who can be peppered with questions about policy governance in particular. So that has been rescheduled and we will have an opportunity to dig a little deeper into some of those questions around policy governance, which is something we'll talk more about tonight. So unless there are questions about the process and where we are, I'm happy to turn it over to Keely and she can talk more, in more detail about the models that we've taken a look at.
I know I can talk loud enough for the people in this room, but which microphone?
Is that for the TV?
Yeah. No, that's for, I'm sorry.
But it'll pick you up.
Right. I think it won't help the TV pick you up.
Great.
Can you hear me now?
Thanks for that. It would be really cool to have it too, but I could reach and see that at the same time, but that's okay.
You want us to turn this side?
You want to switch?
Uh, okay. So I will give you a couple of warnings about this. First of all, I wrote this up mostly to be a set of notes for our subcommittee, not to present it in public, so it'll be a little bit boring watching me read my slides basically. I apologize for that. Also, for me to feel that something that has been, has been researched exhaustively, that means like six hours a week for three months, and I didn't have six hours a week for three months to do this, so I apologize if there are some loose ends left, but hopefully it's instructive. So why are we interested in governance? That's kind of where I started from. Why are we doing what we're doing with this subcommittee? I found a handy definition in a book called Five Habits of High-Impact School Boards, which is kind of a cheesy title, but these habits start from governance. So this author identified that high-impact school boards concentrate on governing above all else and develop their capacity to govern before they undertake his other three habits of high-impact school boards. So when we start thinking about governance, I then thought it would be useful to come up with a definition. Obviously, this is not an ideal platonic definition. This is just one definition, comes from the OECD. It was quoted in a report from USAID and defines governance as a set of relationships between an organization's management, its board, and other stakeholders. Governance also provides the structure through which the objectives of the organization are set and the means of attaining those objectives and monitoring performance are determined. So this touches on a number of the things that we've talked about, about why we want to identify a governance model. In particular, monitoring performance, discussing roles and relationships between the board and the administration, and then structure. So one of the topics that you'll see comes up again and again when we're looking at models is, you know, what's the role of committees? How does the board communicate with the administration? So I just thought this was a handy definition. So then I went to look into corporate governance models. And if you want to know why I looked at corporate governance models, it's because we had spoken a lot about the Carver Policy Governance Model and it is used in some corporations as well as in nonprofits and schools. The Carver Policy Governance Consultancy has made an effort to use language that would apply as broadly as possible so that they can serve corporate and nonprofit and school clients. And I thought that it would be useful to look at the background assumption of models from other areas than just schools to see how they are using governance. So in the big picture, if you're looking at corporate governance, we're really just talking about American corporate governance. Corporations in America and a few other countries have made an effort to really standardize and formalize governance in a way that in a lot of the world, corporations tend to be controlled by family conglomerates, so this isn't really an issue. In America, corporate boards must comply with certain laws and regulations about who's on the board and what their roles and functions are. The basic principles of these laws and regulations define fiduciary duties, good faith, loyalty, and due care. And in corporate governance, you'll see committees defined, and they're seen as an opportunity for part-time directors who are often recruited from the industry with a lot of expertise. So these, this is an opportunity for the directors to use their specialized expertise for the good of the organization. And we sometimes see that in our own roles in committees, that we are serving in things that we see as our strengths and ways that we can contribute to, whoa, the board. Hi, this is, yeah, okay, sorry about that. The mouse got away from me. Okay. So, different models that have been defined for corporate governance, what people are always calling the traditional model. This is characterized by committee work. Also, one unique aspect of a traditional model of corporate governance is that if the company is in a crisis and they've had to sack the CEO, the directors will step in and run the organization. I don't know that that's, you know, seen in a lot of school districts, but just to be aware of that when you try to take models from other fields, sometimes they'll have things that do or do not work. The next popular model that we see is the Carver Model of Policy Governance. It drastically reduces the focus on committee organization and emphasizes the board having a relationship with the CEO as a sole employee. So there, there's critique and sort of people see strengths and weaknesses to this way of conceiving of the relationship between board and administration. Then there's a collective model, mostly found in smaller organizations where the board, the management, and the staff are all involved in decision-making and running the organization together. An operational or management model, which Kim gave a good example of the Saxon Hill School, which many of us are familiar with in the local area, where the board is running the organization with or without paid staff. This is not really aligned with the rules and regulations for publicly traded companies, but it can happen in small organizations. And then lastly, I identified a model with a name. There's the Cortex Model. This focuses on an accountability framework, supporting outcomes of importance to the community, and it's particularly popular with pension systems. So you'll see this with a lot of like state pension systems and other, especially public pensions. Okay. So then I forgot to put in divider slides between sections, but we're now moving on to nonprofits. Once again, this is an area where you see some similar approaches to governance used that you would see in school boards. And I think it's more relevant than corporate governance because nonprofits exist to serve the public good or achieve some usually altruistic goal rather than to make money for shareholders. Our school district is not trying to make money for shareholders, we're trying to deliver a benefit to the community. And it's useful again to understand other areas where these models are used. In the big picture, nonprofit boards share similar fiduciary duties to corporations, but they have an extremely varied range of organizational structures. And this is partially because of their size and the variety of their goals. So you can see major international. So you can see major international non-governemental organizations. You can see religions. So I have a friend who served on the board of the Unitarian Universalists. Then you can see farms organized as nonprofits. And your local Jane Austen Society nonprofit. So these all are extremely different in their organization. Often, board members are involved on a volunteer basis and might be drawn from a pool of people who have a lower level of expertise in running an organization than in corporate board situations. The final challenge for nonprofit governance is determining the identity of the people who you're supposed to be loyal to. Who are the owners or the stakeholders that your decisions should be made with an eye to serving? In the process of exploring nonprofit governance, I found a variety of different but similar definitions of good governance. So what these models are trying to achieve. And I think that in the process of whatever governance approach we end up instituting, it would be wise for us to come to a shared definition of good governance, what we are trying to achieve with the model that we select. In this example, they identified principles of accountability, fairness, transparency, and responsibility as being most important to governance. The models in nonprofits include all of the examples that we saw in corporations. They include also an advisory board model. This is where the nonprofit seeks a board of directors who have expertise that can assist the nonprofit in achieving its goals. Then the patron model, where the nonprofit tries to get directors who are extremely wealthy donors, who are going to set an example of contributing to the organization financially and leveraging their network to gather the people to contribute. The final area where you would see something in nonprofits that you wouldn't really see in corporations is the consensus model, where the board, management, and staff are all involved equally in decision-making and running the organization. All right, and lastly, we move to the public sector. So as a public school district, we're part of the public sector. So it's good to see what's going on in governance in the public sector. These other organizations in the public sector are likely to encounter some of the challenges that we would see that nonprofits and corporations would not see, like the fact that the board members are elected, the fact that we get our budget from taxation, and that political trends in many places do have an impact on school board membership and decision-making. I think we're lucky in Vermont that people don't run for the board aligned with a party, but in some areas they do, and I don't know, it could happen here, too. We could uncover other school boards or elected bodies who have dealt with similar issues to us. That was my hope at least. Well, I really need to get better at this one, I'm so sorry. All right. In the big picture in the public sector, our governance, it has, there's a broader set of norms and expectations. And as getting done later, there's a wider range of laws and regulations that govern what we do. We also have a larger group of stakeholders. So the whole community cares, not just donors or, you know, stock owners, not just employees. In fact, in some degree, the whole state cares about the decisions we make because of Vermont's Shared Education Funding Formula. So some other public sector boards are elected, others can be appointees. But I had a really hard time finding defined models of governance in the public sector. And part of this could be because in cases where it gets political, often everyone is kind of accusing each other of bad governance and you don't end up with models of great governance. I thought, you know, Tammany Hall governance is not what anyone wants to imitate. I did find some useful definitions of good governance that have been developed by public sector organizations. The Office of the Auditor General of British Columbia has done some amazing work on describing all of the components of good governance. They also came up with this A-list, or just a list, definition of good governance, identifying the principles as accountability, leadership, integrity, stewardship, and transparency. Very similar to the other ones, so I don't think it would be too hard to adopt one of these. Then another definition from the International Federation of Accountants that focuses on things like integrity, engagement, defined outcomes, growing the capacity over the organization and managing risk. So people are trying to describe good governance even if they aren't naming models. So where does this leave us? In my research, I determined that public sector boards and school boards seem to be most focused on defining the qualities of good governance, assessing whether they meet those standards, and taking rational steps to improve their practice. Looking at those goals, the Carver Policy Governance Model seems to be the most well-known and developed implementation process for a set of recognized good governance practices. It's not particularly unique in how it defines good governance in terms of the principles or the definition of governance. What is unique is how developed the process is of getting boards to that point. So we still wondered, are there other options? And are there any downsides to using the policy governance approach? So since I had identified a named model in the process of my research, I thought I would look into it more. If you do want to learn more about this model, it's linked from my most recent version of this, which I'll make sure gets shared with you guys. They have a whole slide share here. My research indicates that it is not used by any school boards. It is used by a lot of public pensions and other similar sort of finance and investment-oriented organizations, but not by schools. So they have a developed consultancy, which is probably why it has a name and you can find it, because there's people who are making money from getting people to implement it. And the principles sound great. So if you look at the slide share, what it is going to give you is a lot of good ideas of the sort of things you should be looking for in the process of instituting a governance model. But it doesn't seem particularly oriented to school goals and systems. Another thing that I came across was something called the Six Dimensions Approach to Board Governance. This is in nonprofits. And the six dimensions are defined in this article linked at the bottom in the most recent version. Basically, this is not a model that a consultancy is going around implementing, but it is a set of factors that they've actually done research to determine whether they are correlated with positive change. So most approaches to governance have not been effectively studied in a way that could make any sort of claim about whether they make a difference for the success of the organization. So Al's hope, for instance, that whatever we do, we'll be able to empirically assess that our change in governance is making a real difference for the district. That research isn't really out there. These dimensions to governance, however, have been studied extensively in nonprofits and seem to be correlated with greater success for the organizations. So again, something that's useful to look at and make sure, you know, as we're approaching a model, are we using these elements? This is from a month ago, so I have researched further. I have not found any school districts that have intentionally tried to set up a governance model organized around the six dimensions. But many of them, again, could be described as using these six dimensions. So, and then I had additional further next steps, again, a month ago. One thing that I would reemphasize is that there's a lot of resources out there from around the country and around the world for nonprofits and some resources for public sector organizations. So we should try to be as exhaustive as possible in looking for resources in New England that might have support for boards that are doing governance work. So maybe there's stuff that supports municipal boards or stuff that supports nonprofits that could share with us some materials or wisdom of some sort as we go through this process. Basically, the final question is, is it more effort and more, more effort and less success or less effort and more success to go with the policy governance approach, which is already fully developed, but may or may not be most specifically suited to our specific needs? Or to try to develop something ourself based on the principles of good governance, just tweaking what we already do rather than going through the work-intensive policy governance process? So there was an article that is by Alan Hoff, I don't know how to pronounce his name, called "The Policy Governance Model: A Critical Examination", which assessed basically a laundry list of criticisms that had been leveled at policy governance in a nonprofit context. And to my understanding, reading the article, effectively debunks pretty much all of these criticisms. The only concerns that remain are, is there enough empirical evidence that it makes a difference? And what I quote here, "It cannot be known whether the model is sustainable given the realities of nonprofit boards. Many organizations can sustain the model for at least two or three years in implementation, but there only remains anecdotal evidence of organizations maintaining the model for longer periods. The lack of empirical demonstration of sustainability in the long term is true for all so-called heroic approaches to governance." In other words, you have to put in a lot of effort to institute policy governance, but it probably takes sustained effort to maintain a serious implementation of policy governance. So it's worth thinking about whether we are ready to invest that level of attention to how we do governance if we enter that process. A whole bunch of further resources to look into. So, anyone have any questions?
I would just say thank you. I look forward to, thanks, Keely. I look forward to connecting to some of the links that you've given us. And I think it should help all of us prepare for the panel discussion at the board retreat, which will include districts that do policy governance and at least one district that is seen by many to do good governance without a particular named model for doing it. Is that fair? Yeah. Questions? Todd?
Would it be possible to come to the retreat with sort of a matrix saying, here's what we do now, here's sort of what's different with policy, and here's different with, you know, Cortex or something else, just so it's kind of easy to see, you know, this is where we are and this is what might change if we go to a different model? Because I think, you know, for me especially, understanding exactly what we're doing now is helpful to figure out where we might want to go, if anywhere.
I think that would be a good idea. And I think the other thing, too, that I was thinking of, Todd, is that it probably would be good to have, for some people, just a general primer of policy governance, because we have had policy governance discussions at retreats before. We've had guests come in. But we also might be a little rusty on exactly what it means to implement policy governance. So maybe like a 101 to kind of get people centered around what is it and what is it supposed to do before we hear people talk about it, I think would be helpful.
Just to follow up on that, I don't think it would be possible to exhaustively examine everything, but if there's a few particular things you're interested in, we can certainly assemble like a dozen things, like how we do it, how you guys did it in the town under policy governance. And we could like go back to our research from earlier and figure out like how Champlain Valley does it, if there are the example that's coming in.
Or, or it might help also cue or tee up questions for the panel. You know, so if we're curious about a specific area, you know, we could say, geez, you know, we've wrestled with communication, you know? How is that handled in policy governance?
I just think it would be helpful to know if we were to switch from whatever we're doing now to something else, what would change?
Right.
Thanks. Patrick?
I think that's a great idea, Todd, of piggybacking on that. If we had some examples of our own that we would maybe like to add to that, should I shoot those like in an email to you, Martha? Or should I shoot them to Brendan?
No, I think Brendan.
I could collect those and then share them with the committee. It seems like we'll probably need to have a meeting, if we can, before the retreat. And if not, we'll figure out a time immediately after.
Okay, yeah, I can think of one or two, like immediately off the top of my head that I would love to see some examples of, so I'll just email you. Great.
Anything else? Anything else you want to talk about in terms of the task team's work? I think you covered it at the beginning.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're good.
When is your next meeting?
We haven't yet scheduled it.
Okay, okay.
The only thing I'm interested in is that I think that you referred to policy government, governance having some support in the state. And other models might not have that kind of support. I'm interested in what kind of support we would get if that was the model that we chose and how that might affect our decision of moving in that direction or not.
That was part of our original charge, was to figure out what it would cost. So if the support is somebody from VSBA versus if the support is a consultant that we have to pay, that would come into that category.
Even with VSBA, I think you had...
Depending on the level of implementation, some basic training can be available.
In Essex Town, we brought in a consultant from the VSBA who did, you know, weeks and weeks of training with the board.
Yeah, and then there was an ongoing sort of support network of those practicing in it that was, I think, met more robustly before. I don't know that I recall that it was meeting as we were wrapping up Essex Town.
For a period of time at the annual meeting at Lake Maury, there was like a network of policy governance boards that would kind of get together and even have sessions just about certain aspects of policy governance. I don't know if that's the case anymore. I don't remember that being part of the agenda for this past conference, but...
I don't remember seeing it either.
A few years back, that was, it was a pretty active group.
Yeah. And it's possible that they remain active without facilitation, just in sharing work they're doing, probably.
That'd be a good question for the panel.
Yeah.
Todd?
I also think we should keep in mind of what we think we want to achieve as a board, because knowing what we want to achieve, I think, is going to help us figure out what sort of model we want to go with. If we have one goal, but choose a model that isn't going to help us get there, then that's not great. I mean, if, you know, thinking about the Cortex, that's probably driven towards performance, right? Looking at pension systems. And I would imagine as a school board, we want to see performance. So maybe we want to keep in mind, what are the outcomes we want to see from our work? And can we measure that?
But it's Cortex performance only in the investment world, and it doesn't translate well to the world of education, or it doesn't. And so those are, yeah, that's one of the questions.
Based on what I, based on what I've read, they would have a lot of useful input on like how you work within your organization. But when it comes to your organization's outward-facing goals, all of their research is financially oriented, so...
Yeah, I was just, I'm not saying that's what we need to do, just...
No, that's the kind of discussion you should be looking to have.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I think, I'm thinking about Cortex in my pension investment committee hat, and I'll look forward to reading more about that. But it mirrors somewhat the way we're structured and our work with our outside consultant and our work with the CFO. And so it is interesting to think about that and our actuary folks. But nonetheless, it lends itself to that idea of policy governance 101, thinking about those end statements or whatever we might call them, being outcomes-driven. So they're, they're, you know, called something different. But it is, we sort of forget that we haven't really looked at 101 stuff since we were forming as a board before we even had students. So it's been a while, that may make sense.
That's a membership turnover.
We have, we have.
Okay, anything else for the governance committee?
One final question. Keely, you referenced this article with...
Keely, you referenced this article with Alan Hugh, but I'm wondering if he's published anything since 2002 regarding policy governance, whether he shifted his views, or caught up to modern times?
Been able to examine things that are sustained.
Because it's a seventeen-year-old writing.
Well, there was a lot of sort of fervor around policy governance in the late 90s.
Right.
I think so, by that time, they had enough to explore a few years' worth of what had happened.
Actual application, but whether there's anything further.
I can certainly explore that.
Thank you.
Or of those, three months, you know?
Yeah. And if not theoretically, even that's a question we could ask those practicing, because I think we could probably reflect on our experience over the years of, you know, how it evolves when you're in it, but more, it'd be better to hear that, I think, from our panelists, to see.
I mean, I think one of the things that I recall about policy governance that relates to sustainability, is that because it is so different from how traditional boards operate, that when you have turnover of members or directors, it takes a lot of effort to get that one person, or those couple of people, up to speed with the rest of the board. And I remember that being a challenge, because it's not just orientation, it is like, a crash course in a completely different way of thinking about governance. And so that, that might be related to the sustainability issue, because initially, you have a group of people that, you know, get trained up in it, get really good at it, and then people start peeling off as, as elections occur, and then you have a different set of people, and all of those people are at different levels of.
Sure.
Of expertise in practicing the governance model.
And I think as we became a little more mature, like the last person we brought on, we had like, monitoring reports to look at, so we could, that brings you up to speed fairly quickly, because you, you learn your organization in context, so it, it's a maturity process, but it got easier. It was hard to figure out how you orient, and then it, when we had a book of reports, it was easier, because you really know it, your organization then.
Okay. We're ready to move on. All right. So we're going to flip back on the agenda to the student transportation status update. We went much more quickly than we thought we would, Jamie, so.
Pleasant surprise.
It is a pleasant surprise. So, well, it's a good thing, because we have a lot of new executive sessions.
I was worried I was talking too long.
So, how do you want to handle the status update?
I think Jamie should do it.
There you go, Jamie. Floor is yours.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Right. So, the status update that went around to folks, I just wanted to highlight a few things on that, and give the folks a chance to ask some questions. Do you have any questions against that? Our contractor has reported that we have enough drivers, and we are set to provide transportation for the village this year. Operating, there's going to be three routes that will serve the village. You know, there's going to be a lot of checking and assessing, and, you know, checking ridership, checking in with, with school administrators, with families, to make sure that things are going right, and I anticipate we may have to make some adjustments, as we always do, but we're going to put buses on the road. There are three veterans that are going to cover for three folks who are getting their licenses right at the beginning of the year. I think there's three really, really big wins that I wanted to highlight. One, village busing. Two, this year, we also saved Green Mountain Transportation, now the Silver Loop, the Essex Center, we had a huge outpouring of community support at the end of last year for that, not just from the school front, but from other fronts, so that's still going to be a resource available to our middle school and high schools, that's big. And the third really big win for us is, we retained a lot of drivers, it's a pretty cutthroat business out there for C D L drivers, and we're moving on to like, eighty to ninety percent of the last year. So, the other item that I wanted to touch on, and I'm sure there may be questions on this, we have a contract that has gone through a best-of-my-day offer process for Western K E schools, and that's an action item that, for you all tonight, I wanted to give an opportunity for you all to ask questions on that.
We already approved it.
Consent it.
Good, good.
And then, just the last piece I wanted to touch on, before, you know, before I give you folks a pre-race to have a real questions, is we're doing a lot more community engagement this year. I have a slate of, oh gosh, I don't even know, but it's close to, close to ten different events, you know, we're going to do a community-wide event right before the beginning of the year, after we set out information to families about the reasons and stops and times, we're going to do this community engagement event, you know, next Tuesday, to allow people to come in and get an overview and ask questions. And then I've got nine or ten different at-school events, that will be smaller sessions where I can engage folks, they can come and ask me questions. I think that's, you know, what a difference it here makes, we're in a place where I think we're a little more able to be proactive than we are, I have. That's that. What, you folks have other questions?
I definitely want to encourage people to come out to the meeting next week, so they should be looking for information about their stop. You said, like, it would be sent out this Friday?
We've got more message families this Friday, they'll give information about their route and stop time, they'll also give information to direct them to the district website where it will be posted. We're going to do, I'm going to do both an email and a phone call, because I know the Dom Hall families use email, they have the ability to actually push specific, student-specific stop information via email. It basically looks like a mail merge, and it gives them their stop, their time, and we're trying to derive the data there. But then there'll be a phone call that says, you know, this information is on the website in a more generalized way, or you can contact the transportation department if you have questions.
And are you working with the schools to contact people who might have like, English as a second language, for the parent or guardian, all that sort of situations where?
Yeah, I talked to some folks in the ESL, you know.
Great. Thank you.
One thing that's going to be interesting is that the village has never experienced school buses, other than public transport, with our community at large, with the various businesses, commuters, that use all the corridors. Has there been any information, or will they be sharing to alert people that your commuting time is going to potentially be impacted, because of the stop and waiting for the bus to pick up the student, start again, stop again? Because I foresee that this will be a learning curve for everyone.
Yeah, I haven't really done specific engagement, or don't have a plan for specific engagement outside of the schools.
Sure.
You know, there's definitely going to be information about how to ride the bus, how to get on the bus, you know, for families.
For the users.
Yeah, for the users.
Right.
And it's an interesting question, because the buses may impact times, but taking cars off the road from folks driving their kids to school may feel a bit harsh there, yeah, upsetting. We definitely have, I have touched base with the Essex reporter, and they're preparing some information, which will at least alert folks at large that there will be buses on the road.
And that's for this Thursday, isn't it, Jamie? Because they're going to, they're going to tease the community meeting for the.
Brendan?
Can you remind me if, for the village, we decided on congregated stops, or is it door-to-door?
They will definitely be congregated stops, yeah.
Aggressively.
Given the amount of resources that we had, so the vehicles and drivers, the density of the village, and also the infrastructure that we have with sidewalks, the ability to D P W to clear, you know, those pedestrian walkways, and the crossing yards, I think it's, the congregated stops are the way to go.
Yep.
Other questions for Jamie?
Okay.
Who was first? Deacon, and then Todd.
Okay. I have two questions. One is on the calendar, in that you state that the Seven Street Open House is in the afternoon on the 27th of August, but I see it listed here as September 17th in the evening. So is this an additional open house for Seven Street?
Hmm. I have a September 17th.
Okay.
I have a, I have a September 17th, I have one though.
Oh, yeah.
We also have September 17th, I gave you the other, the open house dates within the notes.
Right, right, which is, which is.
It could be.
Where did you see the August date?
On his, on the note here on, on mine, in his other information. Go, go into the, the transportation note. And the other question I have is, is the congregated, as to, I know that there are kids in my neighborhood, specifically on my street, within doors of me, I have no sidewalks. Is that being taken into consideration, as they're going to be waiting on the side of a road that's two cars wide?
Yeah.
Okay, is that being, is that being considered, as where they're assembling?
I went through, in, in building the stops, I tried to look at every area, if there are places where there are, that is certainly something that, that's one of those places where we can make adjustments. What, what neighborhood?
The Villa Drive neighborhood, Warner, Edgewood, Grandview.
Near the Harley store?
Yeah, behind the Harley store. The only, the only one that, the only one that has a sidewalk is, is Willie's Court. The rest of the place doesn't have any sidewalk. So, which is why I'm asking, because there are four, there's six kids that I know of, and there may be more, that live on my street, or, or with inside of my house. And last I knew it, there's no sidewalk in front of my house. So this isn't just a concern for three weeks from now, but also, you know.
Well, those are, those are pedestrian students now.
Right, but I live a mile from.
Yep.
So.
I think the congregated stop is.
There are, there are two congregated stops.
I live two miles from A D L.
There's, there's two congregated stops, and they're both on Pearl Street, one on Whitey's Court, because they're the one at the next corner that comes down.
Okay.
That's, that's where the stops are designed currently.
Okay, all right, yeah, that would be a sidewalk stop, all right.
Okay, Todd?
Sure. So, if I understood, remember correctly, I think, I'm just curious how many bus drivers we have, because I believe at the end of the last season it was, if we can get eighteen, which we have now, we can do the village. So how many do we have?
Yeah, it takes, it takes eighteen to operate the system last year and the system this year.
Right.
We have, they, Mountain Transit has, right now, fifteen out of eighteen drivers. There are three veterans. One of them is basically our super sub, who will operate routes until three new trainees get their licenses within the first few weeks of school. So we have, we have eighteen drivers to operate a town and village system, and they also have the additional two drivers to operate Georgia and I was.
And then just to follow up, based on what Brendan had said is, I had asked last year if we got to the point where we have enough drivers to offer a more traditional service to the village, the answer for the administration was yes. Has that changed?
Yeah.
Yeah, some more not congregated stops.
Everyone from countryside walks out of countryside.
Yeah.
Right? Whereas in a similar-sized neighborhood in town, the bus may actually.
Right, like, it would go through countryside like it does through Lang Farm.
Right.
And I think that there's, it's an excellent question.
I mean, that was the answer I was given last year about the administration, I'm just wondering if that's changed.
We would, I think we would certainly look at the, we'd look at the system and look at where, where we want to make improvements. There's a lot of, I think there's, there's a lot of room for improvement across the system. You know, I think one thing that, there's, our middle schools, for example, are currently at both town and village, they don't get picked up until the earliest kids get picked up, twenty-five minutes after school, but releases, and the latest kids are there for thirty-five to forty-five minutes.
Middle schools getting transportation?
What's that?
A D L's getting transportation?
Yep. K E in the village will be in transportation. How well that gets utilized, remains to be seen, but that's, you know, it's similar times for, for both schools, so.
So, Matt, do you have an answer for that?
I hear you saying.
Do I?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you.
Well, I was just going to say, I hear you saying, you're constantly, going to be constantly evaluating how to make the system better, starting with the, you know, the most disadvantaged students if you will.
Yeah, and I was going to say, we're relying on Jamie and his expertise, because if we have more, then he knows where he needs to put them and fix what is already going on. And we were dealing with that last year, when we didn't even have a Jamie to know where routes were going to be, and how we were going to do that. So, yes, that was, yeah, we will keep trying to improve, right, and do the best we can do, but there's things that need to be fixed, if we keep picking up people. And then, yes, if we can improve routes all over, that would be awesome.
Also, just want to clarify, because I think we're using the term, the traditional includes congregated stops.
Right, but I'm thinking more of, not necessarily door-to-door, but.
So more approximate.
Not a loop service, what we were talking about before you proposed the loop service for the village.
So, and, and the other part is, is that, operating a system that was initially designed and forecasted, even by this board in the transportation, of potentially involving upwards of thirty-six drivers, you know, we, we've been, and it's not, no one's designed this to ask for a gold medal, it's not set, you know, it's not what we want to do, but it's to try to provide that access to, reasonable access to transportation, but it's not, it's not where we want to stop.
Okay, thank you.
Keely?
Just to piggyback on that, as you're assessing the performance of the system, I think, keeping in mind the changes that happen with winter will be important, because like, the traditional walking zone near the schools in the center of the village is effectively sidewalk plowed in the winter. But before school, like, my street is not actually sidewalks plowed in the winter. So I think as you get farther away from the center of the village, you'll find conditions more approximating those in parts of the town, that's like, well, sometimes it's plowed, sometimes it's not, so.
Okay. Patrick?
Jamie, about the Silver Loop, I know that the G M T board, I, I don't know, I believe, if my recollection is correct, they said they were going to be kind of examining that, was it like, quarter-to-quarter, or year-to-year, about whether or not it was something that they were going to continue? Like, do we have a commitment from G M T about maintaining that throughout the year? Or are we going to kind of need to keep our ear to the ground about, you know, in the fall, if they look back and the ridership isn't there, are they going to consider cutting that back again? I'm just wondering whether or not we need to kind of be proactive about, you know, listening to what G M T's board is getting for information about ridership, and if we need to step up again, like, I feel, you know, much of the community did earlier in the spring.
I am fairly confident that they won't change the service within this full year. They operate on the same physical year as we do, and I, it would, it would surprise me very much, and I have, from having worked there for ten years, I have a lot of contact with, with folks who are there, and I think no move like that would be telegraphed, I would certainly have a lot of us on it.
Okay.
But I, it would really surprise me if they changed the service during the event.
Because technically, you know, based on experience, that's when they should have the highest ridership, so.
Yeah, I think a change, if any, would be prompted by the school district moving away from the program that we've done. Because that, that was the ridership change in that time period that was different from their whole study. That sort of warranted the continuation. And we've, we have been able to arrange for Tuesday service to accommodate our release schedule, because it's one hour early, which the route was starting at two-thirty.
On all other days, yeah, there's a gap in the middle of the day, and it's start operating again until three o'clock, which, you know, gives our high school students kind of walk out of the bus stop, because it's a perfect time. But on Tuesdays, they will start operating at two o'clock.
And we work closely with our municipal friends and partners to make sure that that worked and was a continuation, so.
Okay, anything else? All right, good luck with all your meetings and with the beginning of the school year. And thank you for the work you're doing for us.
Thank you, Jamie.
Extremely helpful. Thanks. Okay, I think we're ready to move to local and statewide updates. What do folks have? I guess the biggest thing is Nicole Mesa has announced that she is leaving the SBA in November. I think that's going to be a huge change for that organization. Although we thought that when Steve Dale stepped in, Nicole stepped up, and she's done the fabulous job. So hopefully, well, the organization will be as fortunate this time as well.
We're working on the process now, and we'll be speaking with the board about it coming up. I think it's next week, the executive committee is, and we will hope to hire. The target is for October, so that there'd be a month of overlap.
Yeah, yeah, that's always helpful. Any local anything?
No, I don't, I don't have anything local, I think that's coming up. I did have a question about statewide. Do we know where the state landed? Because I heard there was some back and forth about the special education funding and where that bill went.
That's, that's.
Is it just like, like, complete, like, debacle right now, and they're just not touching it? I just, because I didn't hear anything like solid about it, I was just wondering if we knew.
We are waiting to hear.
We, um.
Don't know what we can do.
Erin McGuire has been very active and very helpful, I think, in making the challenges of the rules that have been put forward clear.
I will say the State Board of Ed will not be taking up the rules until the agency has provided procedures for what they, how they would expect for these proposals to be implemented. They, we also, there, Krista Huling is attending the advisory committee meetings in the effort to get direct feedback. The agency had provided draft rules that we will not be.
That's for Act one seventy-three?
Yes, and we will not be taking that up until it's incorporated the feedback from the advisory group and until the agency has provided procedures. So with the timeline for implementation being delayed, we delayed the rulemaking process.
But that's separate from the rules that came out around education that's taking place out contract.
I'm sorry, yes, yes.
Outside of the district, which Erin thinks it would cost our district several hundred thousand dollars in this fiscal year.
Yes.
And, you know, other districts are recognizing what's happening. And nobody seems really clear about where this came from or why. But the other problem is, this is the year that's going to be used as the base for one, Act one seventy-three. And so if our state reimbursement gets lowered in this crucial year, it's extremely problematic for implementing a system that is supposed to allow for more flexibility, so.
There was also a jointly authored email from the SBA, VSA, the, the Principals Association, the Special Educators Association, to request that the agency seek additional counsel on the matter and have, I think they've sought outside legal counsel, that collaborative, to put forth a different opinion, frankly, and so that.
And there's question about what they're, what they is, are proposing meets federal law.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, it's the interpretation of the law.
It's quite a complicated.
Difference of opinion around that interpretation.
I was going to say mess, but I just. So stay tuned.
Ongoing.
On, on the special ed front.
Yep, Todd.
Todd?
I just have a procedural question. I'm wondering, going forward, to make the most of our time for items that we actually have to act on, might it make sense to make the state local updates written out in a consent agenda item as opposed to a discussion item? Because rarely there's anything we need to act on. If there's a question, we can ask a question, otherwise we've gotten the written update and then just accept it.
Right. I think the one, but we'll talk about that in agenda planning. I think the one challenge to that, Todd, particularly during the legislative session, is things are changing daily. And sometimes the board really knows, needs to know where things are at on the day we meet. But some things could come ahead of time, so we could talk about how to make that part happen.
And I think.
Good suggestion.
You would also be getting, all of us, the legislative updates during the session?
Right, that's true, and that helps us stay on top of things.
And that's really helpful, these are sort of off cycle happening in emails.
I would also highly recommend, if you don't do this already, and I don't know if I should be doing this on camera, but I think Vermont Digger covers all of these issues better than any other publication. So if you're really interested in staying on top of what's happening in the state about education issues, signing up for their daily email that connects you to their stories could be helpful.
They have a dedicated education reporter, which is helpful.
Oh, they, yeah, they have lots of dedicated reporters. It's grown a lot since, I remember Anne Galway doing it by herself. Okay.
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Um, I was reading the Select, Essex Select Board minutes, and they're having an active discussion, yeah, yeah. I couldn't make the meeting the other day.
This isn't a Monopoly Man thing, is it? Because I've already gotten chastised for that.
No, 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 this is, this is the Saxon Hill school property that, it has always been gun free because it's school property. And I was reading the minutes, and one of the Select Board members said that because there wasn't a schoolhouse on the property, that we shouldn't be concerned that it's gun free. And I'm wondering, my question is, is should the schools department, us, okay, make a statement that school property, you know, is school property? And no matter where we own it, and it's going to be gun free? Because that's been our past policy.
I don't understand what you're saying is free.
The Saxon Hill property, ninety acres up on the Jerrica Water, they're, they're talking about where guns will be allowed.
For hunting.
For hunting.
Okay, I needed the context.
Okay, sorry.
And what's free?
What's free?
She's saying gun free, like no guns.
Gun free, like, like, the only reason we would expect somebody to have a gun in this building is if it's attached to a police officer.
Because it is owned by the school district, right?
Yes.
The ninety acres is owned by the school district. It may be managed by Essex Town Rec, but it is owned by the school district.
It's not just managed, it's actually managed by Freedom of the Wheel.
Fellowship of.
Fellowship of the Wheel.
But it's our, I mean, it's the school property.
It's school property.
Why is it even?
What's in the list?
It's because there's some individuals who want more access, and there are other individuals, like the neighborhoods abutting it, would like to make sure that they don't have bullets going through their living rooms, because they already dug one out from that neighborhood already, and they're not necessarily impressed.
Okay, so I don't, I got bogged down in this. I would ask the operations folks to check on that and see what, if anything, needs to be done to clarify.
And is, do I understand that that's the will of the board? That any property that's owned by the district is a gun free zone, opposed to this gun free school zone that's established by statute and, and is a property?
Well, I'd have to come back and look at the policy, but I think so.
The, the policy of Essex Junction School District, when the property was actively being managed by the school district, was that it was a gun free zone.
As an asset of Essex Westford School District.
And is now an asset of it.
So I'd have to go back and look at our gun policy and see how it reads. And if it doesn't say that it's gun free, then I think you need to bring that back to the board. Keely?
Um, presumably it also depends on what's in the lease.
Can the lease supersede policy over the state, our property?
If the policy was made in a certain circumstance and the lease reflected that policy, and then we changed the policy, we would probably need to consult a lawyer about which one.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would think this would be a good thing for an agenda item, not a decision right now.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. I think operations needs to do some research, and if it needs to come back to us. Thank you for bringing that up.
I guess a final comment on that, because I was on the understanding that all school property is weapons free by state law. So I guess I'm a little confused.
I think so, I think so too.
Our, our special rules about, with, there's federal rules about within so many figure of the building.
But I also think.
It's a joint property.
Right, so anyway, let's.
The first sentence is very clear in our policy. It just says weapons of any type are prohibited from all Essex Westford schools, school district, schools, properties, activities, or events.
There you go.
Yep.
That's pretty clear.
That's why we have. The lease was enacted.
But the lease needs to be.
It's a law.
I, I think this whole thing started where some people are talking, and the town is going through firearms ordinances.
Yep.
And there's an entire committee that's been formed on a Saxon Hill management plan. So that, so there's, there's a significant amount of information that we can provide the board about where things currently stand, and then we can act in that, from that information.
I mean, it's, bearing in mind that the proposed firearms ordinance change, it does cover that area as part of a no discharge zone, so that's included within it. And I believe that there is, discharge also includes a five hundred foot property buffer around that area. But that being said, I mean, I've walked out there before, and I don't recall whether or not there's actual, like, posted.
Signage.
Signage or not, so that may be something that we may want to.
There is now, this morning, there was a sign there.
Is there? I'm just wondering, like, you know, hunters in the fall who may be coming back and forth, they may not know exactly where that line is. It might just be a good idea to just confirm that it's put up all around.
Right, and I think Keely makes a good point, the lease was signed before, and, you know, so. Okay, so let's move on to, this is the point in the meeting where we go around the room and talk about whether there's something we value about the meeting, appreciated about it, or we're challenged by. Liz, you want to start us off?
I appreciate the length of this meeting.
If we didn't have an executive session. Thanks, Liz. Keely?
You're going to pass.
You can come back, Diane.
I appreciate the, the fact that we've gotten training on the internet.
Kim?
I was going to say the same, I appreciate a common sort of receptacle for well organized documents. And having our Lorna and Natasha join us.
I appreciated the report out on the governance, the first time out, was, well, I appreciated it.
Dino from me, I really appreciated the work you did, Keely, and as usual, the very clear and concise manner with which you presented it, so, thank you.
The internet and Brian walking us through it, and the work that Natasha and Lorna have done, and that they are here to help and answer questions to.
And make an appointment, I will.
That was a great primer and a great resource to just kind of pull it together. So I'm jealous that that was able to be done, because that was so well done.
I value this entire board and our ability to actually, even though I know sometimes we feel like we're crossing it, staying out of the weeds of specific details, because after multiple Select Board meetings, where we literally spent twenty-five minutes discussing font sizes on an infographic, like, this is such a nice change of pace.
And that was after the first part of the font discussion, graphic discussion.
Great meeting, I, I appreciate Keely and the effort and the work that she put into the presentation on governance. I hope, I think it's a great primer for us as we move into the next phase of our discussions. I'm challenged tonight by Martha's plugging VT Digger. VPR has excellent educational coverage, I encourage you to check it out.
Actually, me too, because our company is in a beef with VT Digger right now.
I sent you some links, Martha.
Amy Coleman, I think Howard Life, too.
I believe all of VPR's, but, but VT Digger comes.
I'm just fun, just kidding. VT Digger does great work.
It was first thing in the morning. Todd?
I'm going to pass.
Okay.
I thought of something.
Okay.
I appreciate the drivers who are coming back this year.
Oh, yay.
Absolutely. Okay, our next regular board meeting is.
Can I just say one thing? Sorry, we miss communications for some reason, but I just had one quick.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, because there wasn't much to report. We had a meeting this week where we checked back in after some time off, over the summer. But I did want to mention that the Voices for Education Group, the leaders of that group are meeting next week with administration and with Erin and Beth and Brian, and some of the student leaders to get that work reorganized for this upcoming school year. And we will report back at the next meeting, where we're really being intentional about engagements moving forward in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty calendar year. And so, meeting next week will give us a, a timeline and make sure that we're working collaboratively on those efforts. So just stay tuned, and we'll give an update at the next meeting.
Okay, great. The reason we didn't put it on was because at that point, at the point we did the agenda, you haven't met.
I was probably in a different continent.
Yeah. Right, okay, anything, does anybody have anything for the agenda on the twentieth that you want to make sure our team that does the agenda doesn't forget?
Just going to mention it so that I remember it as well. But do we have a time for being introduced to Amy's?
Yes, I have that on my notes. So Jackie Tolman will be here next week, I mean, next meeting.
Next meeting.
August twentieth. And we'll also have Dylan reporting out where we're at with the social and emotional learning and the plan moving forward. And he's inviting some coaches.
And he's inviting some coaches to come with him also, so.
And our student reps confirmed that they will be at the next meeting, so we'll put that, my introduction to that.
Okay, good. And our messages to the community. Keely does that, no, right. So I think the tax rate stuff, if you can, you know, put that in a concise way, will be helpful. I think the student transportation update would be great. I think those are really the two things that should go out to the community from this meeting. Folks agree? Okay?
If we wanted a third, we could just say that the board continues to explore governance considerations.
Yeah.
And it's a focus of the work.
Kind of inside baseball. Doesn't hurt to say that. Okay, I will now entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss negotiations pursuant to Title One, Chapter three thirteen, subsection one, and for the superintendent evaluation, Title One, Chapter three thirteen, subsection.
So moved.
Thanks, Brendan.
Any discussion?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll invite Beth to join us for the first part of the executive session. Okay, thanks, Natasha.